Thank you very much.
Is there somebody that is willing to make a motion to approve the agenda? Counselor Lauer, is that a motion or an objection?
Actually, just before we get to motions on the agenda, Mayor Clarke, I'd like to pull from the motions my report at this time. And I'll bring it forward at another meeting.
Madam CEO, just to explain maybe the process for this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is my understanding that Counselor Lauer would like to ask the Assembly to withdraw the report regarding information in Arilia. And then pending the outcome of further conversations, that issue may be brought forward on a further agenda.
Thank you both.
That's what I was going to say.
That's what you meant to say?
All right.
So it would be the agenda without that particular item on it that this evening we would be approving? Counselor Clister, is that a motion to?
Yes, Mr. Clarke, I'll be introducing a notice of motion that would be coming from staff regarding an event to coincide with the Toronto Raptors in a Jurassic Park-style venue. Thank you.
So a motion to put an additional item on the agenda, which would be with respect to a Jurassic Park-type event for the Toronto Raptors. So the agenda that we'll be approving for discussion, and we'll need two-thirds. Madam CEO, are those handled individually as two-thirds? Or is the overall agenda approval with those two items, two-thirds to pass?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, just with respect to the additional item, when we get to that item under notice of motion, at that point in time, you'll be looking for counsel to waive notice. So with respect to this particular issue, you can call the question, ask for a move in second, or you can call the question, and the two-thirds majority will adopt the agenda as you've just discussed.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Moved by Counselor Heen, seconded by Counselor Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. No, sorry. Are there any disclosures of interest based on any items that you have seen before you for tonight, on tonight's agenda? No? Okay. Well, again, if something comes to light later on, please bring it to the attention of the chair. No presentations, but we do have a couple of defutations. The first one, some folks who are no strangers, Joyce Ward, Linda Goodall, and Carrie Nixon from the Simcoe County Alliance to End Homelessness, known as SCADA, are here to provide an overview of the 2018 Simcoe County Homeless Enumeration Report. And you're welcome to the hood. When you're ready, it'll take a moment to get acclimatized. And when you are ready, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I think you all know me as Linda Goodall. I'm the executive director of the Lighthouse. However, tonight, I'm wearing a different hat with the Simcoe County Alliance to End Homelessness and the chapter chair of the Arilia chapter. With me tonight, I have Joyce Ward, who is a 2018 enumeration lead, and Carrie Nixon, who is a housing specialist, a Housing First specialist with Empower Simcoe. And also in the audience, we have Laurie Strong, who is the support and services manager for Empower Simcoe and also on our steering committee. So we are here as representative of SCADA, as we said, Simcoe County Alliance to End Homelessness. We're here to present the findings of the first federal and provincially mandated enumeration of homelessness in the county, and more specifically for Arilia and area. The purpose of this evidence-based research is to inform both countywide and local planning and funding efforts to combat homelessness. The importance of this data cannot be overstated. Homelessness and lack of affordable housing are integrated. So in this respect, enumeration findings shed further light on the public perception that in terms of well-being, access to affordable housing is the number-one problem facing our communities. And now I'll ask Joyce to continue.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. The county, as the service manager, is responsible for undertaking a homeless enumeration every two years. SCADA supported the effort by providing project leadership and coordinating delivery through our five regional chapters. Each chapter established a planning committee. There was a regional committee and a local planning committee. And I had the privilege of being the lead for our Arilia and area local committee. And those local committees focused on supplementing volunteer recruitments for the surveys, mapping hotspots, intelligence about where homeless people were located throughout the city, and providing general administration for the surveys and tracking the surveys. I'd like to acknowledge our wonderful team of planning volunteers for 2018. We had Michael Bells, Cassandra Clark, Amy Marie Langman, Judith Schell, Annie Nikaschuk, and Christine Woodman. In my view, the number-one priority in preparing for the next enumeration, which is coming up quickly in 2020, is to recruit a strong and representative local planning committee at an early date. The enumeration relies significantly on community volunteers. Countywide, participation in this first-time effort was quite impressive. Going forward in Arilia, we need to encourage greater social agency and local government involvement. Special thanks, I'd like to state, are due to Arilia Community Church. It provided an ideal survey headquarters and support services for us. Hopefully, that will continue for future surveys. The Arilia Public Library came on board to offer valuable indoor survey space. And in the weather we had, it was very much appreciated. The OPP helped to identify hotspots. We'd like to really put some more work into that area going forward. And information in Arilia helped us out a great deal in supplementing communications efforts. We're also grateful to two local sponsors who helped with honoraria and refreshments for survey participants and for volunteers, the First Christian Reform Church and Metro Arilia. And finally, but last but not least, thanks too to Counselors Tim Lauer, Jeff Clarke, and Pat Heen for braving the elements as part of our outreach efforts. The federally required point-in-time count, which is a simple headcount, took place during the 24 hours of April 24th. And it targeted both those in temporary housing, such as the Lighthouse, Greenhaven, and Koochiching Jubilee House, housing that they would soon exit into homelessness, as well as those currently unhoused. The county amplified the approach, and they called this Registry Week. The province calls it Registry Week. Opting to collect personal information by way of interviews and to extend the outreach surveying period by two days. But we were still to capture data only for people who were homeless on April 24th. As I mentioned, the weather was cold, overcast, and rainy during the survey period. And no doubt that limited the number of homeless that we found out of doors during that period. 697 is the number of people countywide that were identified as homeless on April 24th. And that used a combination of observation, doing the survey, and taking account of agency utilization. It's recognized, too, that this is just a snapshot, and a number of people will be missed. So 697 works out countywide to 14 homeless people in every 10,000. And that's a useful comparator when assessing our county's experience and needs across different regions of the province. So there are definitely program evaluation and funding implications built into these comparators. Together, these statistics form our county baseline against which future change will be measured. So in 2020, we'll be looking back at 2018, obviously, and seeing what the change shows. Now we're moving on to more in-depth survey findings. And this is from data gleaned both from the pit count, the point-in-time count, but a lot from the personal interviews that were done with persons who agreed to be interviewed. There were 488 of those completed for the county, and 63 of those were from Arilia. So by city, identified homeless individuals in Arilia and area were 97. 97 were identified. A comment would be that we are concerned with that number. We don't think our results are truly indicative. SCADA doesn't think that of the extent of homelessness in our city or the adjacent townships in our catchment area. So that gives us pause to think going forward. Here we have a graphic representation of the same data. And it shows that Arilia and area counts for 16% of those captured by the data. Look, most homeless people surveyed and their family members, if any, did have a temporary roof over their heads. But 82 people, or 12%, didn't. Countywide, the top four reasons for homelessness reflect both personal issues as well as housing-related situations. It's interesting to note that in Arilia, though, inability to pay rent or mortgage and unsafe housing conditions ranked number-one and two, respectively, showing the issues, again, we have in the housing sector that we need to tackle, continue to need to tackle. One-third of survey participants are newly homeless. When it comes to this group of people, research shows that for many, homelessness is not a long-term or recurring circumstance. It's something that people may encounter only once, move out of relatively quickly, and not come back to. The current situation doesn't provide for a smooth transition from institutions back into the community. So people will often leave hospital into a homeless situation or a correctional facility the same way. The province and the county have identified this problem as a real priority. And we're certainly seeking more active participation by these institutions in the survey for 2020. A large proportion of those interviewed reported that they had lived in foster care. But the county's report called "everyone counts" identified that the majority of those people had experienced foster care quite a number of years in the past. So how indicative of that, of the current situation, that is in question. But like hospitals and like prisons, people exiting foster care face issues of needing to integrate into permanent housing. Here we get to some definitions of homelessness. So the chronically homeless, of which 50% of those surveyed were chronically homeless, they are those often with disabling conditions who are currently homeless and have been homeless for six months or more in the past year. Whereas episodically homeless people, a 21%, are people, again, often with disabling conditions, who have experienced three or more episodes of homelessness in the last year. When we come to acuity, that was measured through the survey tool that was used for participants who agreed to be interviewed, which was called the VI-SPADAT, the Vulnerability Index Service Prioritization Decision Assistance Tool. And the figures there represent the complexity of the situation or issues that an individual or family faces that are likely to affect housing stability. So those with high scores or high acuity are assessed more fully for Regional Housing First Program referral. So we see from this transparency that more than half of the individuals surveyed were chronically homeless. And the same proportion, not necessarily the same individuals, have high acuity ratings. Many people experience combinations of these factors. And then we come to trimorbidity, which refers to people experiencing problems with physical and mental health and substance abuse. Three issues. So looking at those issues in more depth. Those are the percentages of people with the varying issues. Physical health issues being paramount, mental health issues, secondly, and addiction issues. This really points the need for more support services for the homeless in our communities, that we need to link them up to support services as well as to housing. The enumeration report indicates that youth are an especially vulnerable and fast-growing group experiencing homelessness in the county. Best practice suggests intervening quickly with family mediation, street and agency outreach, homelessness prevention, and Housing First services. And again, this is a priority for the county moving forward. Indigenous people made up a large number of our homeless population relative to their percentage in the community as a whole. They were also markedly overrepresented in shelters and among the senior and adult age groups in the survey. Most people experiencing homelessness were single adults, far exceeding their representation in the general population. And as you'll see from this transparency, 1/10 of people experiencing homelessness and 1/4 using emergency shelters fled spousal and partner abuse. So this is a big factor contributing to homelessness and emergency shelter use for women and children. And this slide shows the shockingly high and costly use of emergency services among the homeless. These services include hospital, police, ambulance, jail, prison, et cetera. Over half of those surveyed used healthcare emergency services. So that finishes the findings. And with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Carrie to tell you a little bit about some further welcome developments that have flowed from the survey and county efforts with homelessness.
Thank you, Joyce. So Built for Zero is an ambitious national change effort helping a core group of leading communities end chronic homelessness, a first step on the path to eliminating all homelessness in Canada. Our goal in Simcoe County is to reach functional zero by December 31st, 2024, by transforming the system and creating the shortest path from homelessness to housed. Functional zero is defined as where chronic homelessness accounts for three or less of the people on our by-name list. This definition acknowledges that homelessness will still occur, but with hope that episodes will be infrequent, brief, and non-reoccurring. Core drivers of this are community awareness, system capacity, good data, increased housing stock, coordinated access, prevention and diversion, and system advocacy. Now on to Linda.
Great, thanks, Carrie. Some of you may have remembered the 20,000 Homes campaign. So that counted up, and functional zero is counting down. So it's just a little bit a different way to look at it when Carrie was talking about the Built for Zero and the Built for Zero campaign with functional zero. So the next steps. So we're here for doing, number one, educate city councilors and decision-makers. That's why we're here today. Two, increase housing options for people experiencing homelessness. Three, increase primary care, mental health, and addiction services and other supports for street-involved and vulnerable populations. Four, collaborate with the key sector partners to discharge people directly into housing with supports. And five, request counsel to renew commitment to champion affordable housing and Housing First in Arilia, as well as to represent on the local planning committee and to participate personally in the survey for 2020. And finally, we would like to ask that we come back regularly on the community's efforts on homelessness and how this council could assist in those efforts as well. So thank you very much. We welcome any questions that anyone may have.
Great, thank you. The, I'm sure there will be some hands in the air. I don't see any at the moment. But a few things during your presentation struck me. The one stat, I think Joyce gave it, 28% of the people leaving hospitals, I believe it was. I don't know if it was hospitals and jail, but hospitals, for sure, didn't have a place to go. And that reminds me of a story that I reference every once in a while called About a Guy Named Million Dollar Murray. And he was a gentleman who was a very, very frequent flyer, not in this municipality, but in another one. He would end up, you know, sometimes in trouble with the police. But often, first responders would have to come and pick him up. And he ended up in the emergency ward. And this happened with some great frequency. And somebody finally took an interest in this particular individual's life to figure out why this was happening. Anyway, so they tracked him and they assisted him. This would be the early stages, I think, of identifying Housing First with appropriate and relevant support services, which really, truly seems to be the model that begins to mitigate chronic homelessness. So from everything I'm hearing in your presentation, you're talking about doing just that. So good on you. And it seems to me, and SCADA, not SCADA, thank you for that, that, I know there are initiatives that are taking place in different municipalities across Canada. But it seems to me that you are setting a really good example, a template for hopefully success here. And the thing I really like about you, I know you're going to be doing subsequent councils. Please let me know early when that is, and then maybe I can get involved. The, just like we did with the CIW, we did the survey last year to be released very shortly, the data. And we're hoping to do the same thing again in three years, as you are. So I guess my point is, as far as I'm concerned, you're welcome to come back and deliver the, you know, the report on a regular basis so that we can see if the things that we are doing collectively actually are moving the needle on that barometer. Because I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can just add, too, with the Built for Zero campaign, Simcoe County is one of 11 communities across Canada that are involved in that at the moment. They are putting a call out for more communities, but at the moment, we're one of 11.
Terrific, thank you, and good on you. Pat, then Ted.
Thank you, Mayor Clarke. Through you to our panel. I've been really looking forward to seeing the results of this study. As you mentioned, Counselor Lauer and I, we're both part of the people that went out on those really bitterly cold, rainy days back in April and arrived back soaking wet. So, and with that in mind, I really wondered about the timing of doing the enumeration. Joyce, you said that you thought the numbers were probably lower than you had anticipated. And I wonder if that's partly due to the timing. A number of people that we spoke to when we were talking to people said that they knew that sometimes people went in and actually got a room for the winter and then slept rough in the summertime. And whether you would have had higher numbers if it was a month or six weeks later when the weather was a little bit warmer, though this year certainly doesn't say that. But if you had it, say, in June, whether you would have had a result that was probably more, that would have been a higher result and probably given you a better result? And if you could perhaps comment on that? And I've got a couple more questions, if that's okay, Mayor Clarke. Go ahead.
Thank you for the question. Yes, there's been a lot of discussion about the date that the survey was held on. And I think our local chapters share your view and certainly have also had that feedback, that people do, a number of people live in rooming houses through the colder months, and they're just waiting for really good weather to hit the parks and byways and so on. So there certainly would be a difference at a different time of year. My understanding is that the county was kind of circumscribed in its ability to change the dates. I believe the federal government survey period allowed for us to pick a date between March 1st and April 30th. So that was for a common date across Canada for measuring purposes. So whether that will change as a result of feedback they've gotten from the first one or not, I can't comment, I'm afraid.
Thank you, because I think it would make a big difference because we saw evidence of people having been there, but they weren't there. So I think it would certainly change if it was a bit later. My last comment was, and I think that Counselor Lauer could certainly speak to this, is I think it would be a really good experience if we had as many members of council take part as possible. Because it, I mean, my background, having been with victim services, I was very much aware of the homeless population. But I think that it would be an eye-opener for many members of council. And I think it would be an excellent experience if as many of us as possible could take part in the next enumeration.
Thanks very much, Counselor Heen. Counselor Emar.
Thank you, Mayor Clarke, and thank you for presenting. Just one comment on Pat's changing the date. If we want to get a sense of what's happening through time, we don't want to change the date because we'll have no idea whether it's the date change or the actual substance change, notwithstanding that you may have, there may have been a better date. My comment is, thank you for this. I mean, I'm aware of this. At this council table, it's very hard in Arilia not to be aware of the homeless issue. Linda, your organization is very much upfront with us continually. So I think we're sensitive to what's going on. But I can say that it's interesting that the Canadian Index of Well-Being study that is to be released soon, some preliminary results are available, did indicate that the one common factor across the city of Arilia and in the three townships that participated in the study was that number-one thing to move us to better well-being in our community would be more affordable housing. So the fact that you're in that business, not necessarily just in the shelter business, but in the general business of affordable housing has been reinforced very strongly by that. by that study, which is, was conducted about three months later than, than the one you've done, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Councillor Paulus.
Thanks. Just through the chair, I just wanted to thank everyone for the really wonderful presentation, and I really appreciated the, the extent of statistics and how much was detailed there. I guess a question I had, and I'm sure there's many different answers to this, but there's, there were a couple different types of homelessness mentioned. I know chronic homelessness, episodic homelessness, and also a big portion of those groups are Indigenous as well, and I wondered, with each of those groups, are there different, are there different ways that, to focus efforts on ensuring that we, we bring them out of the situation they're in? Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. That certainly is the purpose of the data. The county's report, Everyone Counts, goes into much more detail, of course, than we talked about tonight, and does an analysis of these special groups, youth and Indigenous and LGBTQ and people that require special attention. And the idea is to design efforts where indicated to meet the particular needs of those groups. So in that respect, it acts as an excellent planning tool going forward.
Carrie, did you want to hop in there?
So with the Housing First program, we actually have Indigenous Housing First case managers that work directly with Indigenous individuals to help them with their homelessness situation. So we're addressing those concerns.
Right, thank you. Councillor Spohler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you very much. The education part of this enlightens me even more than I already am. But one of the things that, having supported affordable housing for a long, long time, and the item number one here, educate city councillors and decision-makers, excellent idea, but my key concern here is that we're not educating the public on, on what affordable housing means and what homelessness means. Sure, we're here and we take your reports and we read them and everything else, but the public doesn't know a lot about this, other than, oh yeah, here's another study, and what's it mean? I'm okay, I have three meals a day and pay my rent and so on. So I think we really need to concentrate on educating the public here with the excellent report here, and maybe, I don't know, brochure or something that we can distribute through the mail, or whatever, to educate the public on what it actually means. And if we can do that, if we can be of any help, I'd gladly support that. The other factor that I didn't see in here is the low household income. I didn't see anything in here, on the financial part of it, because that's nine times, well, I shouldn't say nine times, but 50% of the time, it's, it's either low wages or not making enough money to support whatever, and I didn't see anything in here on your study that outlines that, or if that could be one of the questions. And I'm not sure that, that you might have done it, but I didn't see it in the report. So those are the two things that I, very passionate about homelessness, as well as affordable housing. So, but educating the public is key, almost more so than educating us, because we understand it, because we get it from provincial government, federal government, and so on. There was an interesting press today with the Prime Minister and the Indigenous people on their needs and everything else, which is fantastic and, and that, so. But those are my key issues, and thank you again for educating me.
Thank you very much.
I'll comment. I, I'm sure we all totally agree on the education front, that a lot is needed, not only with the general public, but among our social agencies as well. And I'm thinking there, probably of the board members, and really going to the boards and talking about this survey and how useful it is and so on. There's a lot of work there on an ongoing basis. On the other, comment about the low incomes of people, and certainly low income is a, is a, well, low or no income, a major contributing factor. There was some analysis in the report, Everyone Counts, about sources of income, which would have shown how much came from, I believe, ODSP and OW and, and those kinds of things, clearly indicated that we were dealing with a, a low-income group of people. I can get that information for you if you'd like.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, supplement.
Sure.
Thank you. One of the key issues that I found with this bit over on nonprofit housing is that we, we educated on finances, how to keep your bankbook, how to, how to do your shopping so you're not spending 60% a year, and believe me, doing the shopping today, I don't know how people survive shopping for food at stores right now. So, but anyways, that's the kind of thing that I'd like to see.
Thank you, councillor Spohler, and thank you all very, very much. It was a, an eye-opening report, and, and hopefully that we'll, we'll be able to take some information of this, and, and even when we're doing our, our strategic plan later in this year, hopefully it'll be, I'm sure it'll be informed partly by your, by your report. Thank you.
If I may, we, we have information here about the coordinated access and functional zero, so we'll leave that here for you, so that you can each get that information as well.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, Carrie, thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Okay, we go from building bridges between homelessness and stability to provincial infrastructure. And with that, we'll invite Jim Dowell, Senior Project Manager, WSP, is here to discuss the Ministry of Transportation Preliminary Design and Class EA or Environmental Assessment for the proposed Highway 11 West Street Bridge Replacement Interchange Construction Associated Improvements. Take a minute, get comfortable, welcome, and when you're all set, the floor is yours, and you can start just maybe introducing yourselves again, please.
Decide whether I need my glasses or not. We'll try this. I'd like to thank mayor and members of council for inviting us this evening to give this short presentation. I'm Jim Dowell with WSP, I'm the consultant project manager, and with me tonight is Nanda Candia, who is the MTO project manager for this project. I think this is going to work, there we go. So we have a number of slides here, I understand that we have a limited time, so I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. This first slide gives you a rough idea of the items we're going to cover as part of the presentation, and the graphic actually shows the study area for this particular project, which is the replacement of the overpass, West Street over Highway 11. We're also going to be doing some improvements to the interchange ramps, and in fact, we're going to add an additional ramp in the southwest quadrant. The existing structure is about 45 to 50 years old. It has a history of being struck primarily by southbound traffic, and that's the primary reason for, for this project. The structure has deteriorated much more quickly than we would normally anticipate, so it is in need of a replacement, and that's what we're going to do as part of this project. This project is being undertaken as part of an environmental assessment, we're following the MTO's class environmental assessment. This is a Group B project. We sent out our notice of commencement last November, we have a public, or we have a website that is accessible to members of the public, and we've received little more than 30 comments on the project to date, and curiously enough, the vast majority of those comments have related to pedestrian and cycling activity over that structure, basically from Aurelia to the Aurelia Square Mall. So that was an interesting development, I think. Environmentally, the, the area of the study is relatively disturbed, we have identified some environmental features, there are a couple of mudder nut trees in the, in the southeast quadrant, they're actually in relatively poor condition, but they are a species at risk, so we have identified them. There's some bat habitat, or roosting habitat, nesting habitat in that southeast quadrant as well. There's some evidence of snapping turtle nesting in the northwest quadrant, or the, I think so the lagoons, the treatment facility for the mall. And in the southwest quadrant, there's habitat for whippoorwills and night hawks, and it would be for nesting and those types of things. So there, there are huge environmental issues in the area, but needless to say, there are some that we need to be aware of, and they'll be taken into account as we move forward. The highway itself is a, is a two-lane highway, or two lanes in each direction, northbound and southbound. West Street is two lanes, lane in each direction across the highway. As part of our planning for this project, we are going to plan for an ultimate six-lane cross-section of Highway 11, so our new bridge will be longer than the existing bridge, just to accommodate the additional two lanes. But the widening of Highway 11 is not part of this current project. So we will be doing all of our work with the structure and with the interchange ramps, but the highway will remain as a four-lane highway for the immediate future. Traffic volumes in the area, Highway 11 is, I guess, relatively busy, it's about 32,000 vehicles on an average day, that climbs out to about 38,000 in the, in the peak summer season. West Street, we have some different data, we had some information from the city of Aurelia that put the traffic volumes at about 15 and a half thousand. We undertook a count as part of our study last fall, and we were in the order of 10,100. So there's a bit of a discrepancy there, but as, to be on the conservative side, when we did our traffic analysis, we actually used the higher volume that was provided by the city. Growth in the area, or traffic growth in the area, we use the Greater Golden Horseshoe Traffic Model, which is maintained by the Ministry of Transportation, and it gives us sense of how traffic is going to grow in the area. And it takes into account known developments within the area, roadway improvements and those types of things. So we're looking at a growth to 2031 of about 2%, and 1% to, to 2041, and those are the growth rates that we use in our analysis. This is just a, a graphic that illustrates the, the operation of the, the intersections on West Street from Skyline Drive right through to Brody Drive, and includes the ramp terminals. These, this is existing conditions in the PM peak hour, which is the, the highest peak hour during the day, and as you can see, everything's green, so the, the intersections are working quite well as they are today. Moving ahead to 2041, which is our horizon here for this project, and the do-nothing situation, which is leaving things the way they are and letting traffic grow, we start to see that there are problems at the ramp terminal, and those problems are due to capacity issues at the ramp terminals, as well as queuing back into the, the through lanes, for example, and at the east ramp terminal, they're going to queue back through the skyline intersection. So from a traffic perspective, we're looking at, I think, a congested condition by 2041. So dealing with the structure and then dealing with the future traffic volumes were really the, the problems that we were trying to solve as part of the study. So as part of our development of alternatives, we did look at 11 different interchange configurations, many of them were very similar to what was out there today. We did look at roundabouts at the ramp terminals, for example, we looked at some innovative types of interchanges, we looked at a single-point urban diamond, we looked at a, at, I guess, a diverging diamond, which is something that's very new and is being implemented in the United States, and there will soon be one in Ontario, I believe. But at the end of the day, we ended up with two alternatives that we, we carried forward for more detailed analysis, and that's our alternative 2.4, and then alternative 6. The alternatives are basically the same on the west side of the, of the interchange, so we've made improvements to the existing ramp and the existing southbound off-ramp, and we've added a new ramp in the southwest quadrant, so it's a ramp from the west to the south. And that ramp will improve the operation of the west ramp terminal, and it's also going to facilitate the entry onto the highway by the, the aggregate haulers that are currently hauling aggregate out of Severn Township. So rather than have them go through the intersection and make a left turn with the traffic lights, they'll have direct access to the highway in a southbound direction. For A24, we've improved the ramp terminals on the east side as well, that's basically making geometric improvements, so that the radii work better, and we've also changed the intersection at, at the ramp terminal. Alternative 6 is the same on the west side, on the east side, we've put in a, suggested a diamond interchange, which is basically two interchanges that provide access from the south and then to the north. So we went through a, an analysis evaluation, we looked at socioeconomic factors, natural environment, cultural and heritage, transportation technical, and then cost estimate. And basically, on the, on the transportation and the technical issues, we selected alternative 2.4 as our preferred alternative. The Parklow interchange, or the Loop Ramp interchange on the east side is preferred over the Diamond, just from, it handles traffic better, there's no risk of wrong way, reduced risk of wrong way movement that you get with a Diamond interchange. And technically, Diamond ramps were going to mean that we needed to add significant amounts of fill in order to build those ramps. If you're familiar with the area, there are a couple of pretty deep holes there that would need to be filled, and that's going to cause us some problems in terms of constructability, so the existing configuration was a bit easier to, to construct. So our preferred alternative is alternative 2.4. And this is a, a graphic that shows it, it's a bit of a, a small scale, but as you can see, we've got the Loop ramps, we're actually showing the six-lane cross-section as, as part of this, this graphic. The other thing to note is that the new structure is going to be offset slightly to the south. The reason for that is that we'll maintain traffic across the highway on the existing West Street structure while we build the, the new structure. There may be some very short-term closures as we just make the transition from the old structure to the new structure, but generally speaking, traffic will be maintained across the highway, and so traffic, well, going both directions, but primarily from Aurelia to the Aurelia Square Mall will be maintained. So that's relatively straightforward. Looking at the future condition, 2041, with the improved interchange, we can see that the intersections are working well. The only issue that we have is in the westbound through movement, where we'll have some queuing that's going to take us back to the skyline intersection, and that is, actually just barely makes it back to the, to the intersection. So, so we've managed to improve the operation completely at the west ramp terminal, and we're going to have potentially a very small queuing problem at the east ramp terminal. This is just a, a graphic that illustrates the, the bridge that's being proposed. There's really not much to say about this. The cross-section may be the most interesting, showing that we're going to use precast concrete girders, there will be a lane in each direction, and we're also going to include a, a multi-use trail on that structure. And we'll talk about that in a second, but pretty conventional design, there's nothing really too radical about this. We've changed the, the skew angle of the bridge a little bit, just to make it a bit easier to build, but other than that, it is relatively straightforward. Active transportation, and this relates to the multi-use trail. Township of Severn and the city of Aurelia both have a multi-use trail in their, well, for you guys that see your active transportation master plan, and for the township, it's their master transportation plan, but regardless, the, the multi-use trail crossing the highway is shown in, in both of those plans. And what we're proposing is that we'll make the connection across the highway with a multi-use trail on the north side. The city township standard is for a three-meter multi-use trail, we're proposing four meters across the highway, and that's basically just to accommodate shy distances off of barriers and, and, and those types of things, so. The other thing that you may be interested in is that we've made all of the intersections at the ramp terminals 90 degrees, so we won't have any high-speed ramps that'll have to be crossed by. So we won't have any high-speed ramps that'll have to be crossed by pedestrians and cyclists. So they're all, all the crossings will be at the signalized intersections, which is going to make things a little easier for the pedestrians and cyclists. Another issue we had to deal with was access management. And this first slide shows access management on the west side. We're going to have to modify the entrance into the Canadian Tire property, the Arilia Square Mall, a little bit. We were just trying to maintain the existing separation from the ramp terminal to the existing intersection or the existing entrance. So we've had to push it slightly to the west, but we tie back relatively quickly into the interior road network, road pattern within the mall property. There are four entrances on the south side of Burnside Line. They're all into the private property and combination of the realignment of the crossing and then with that new ramp in the southwest quadrant, all four of those entrances will be closed. And then on the east side, we've got a couple of commercial entrances eastbound. We're going to maintain those as they are today. And then in the westbound direction, we're dealing with some private entrances. A couple of those have alternate accesses. There's a residential property right at the corner of Commerce and West Street. Their main access is off of Commerce and they have a parking spot basically off of West Street. And we're going to approach the landowner to see if they're amenable to closing that access. And the other one is a property at, I think it's 478 West Street. They have access from West Street and then onto Commerce. And similarly, we're going to approach that property owner to see if they're willing to close their access. If they don't wish to do it, there's not a whole lot that we can object to, but just eliminating those two accesses would make it a little cleaner on that piece of road. So that's something that's going to happen as we move forward. Utilities, there are utilities out there. The utility that we're going to, I guess, impact to the largest degree is Union Gas. They have an eight-inch main that crosses into the highway on the south side of the structure. Our new abutment is going to be right on top of that. So we've initiated contact with Union Gas and that will be relocated actually further to the south. They will directional bore under the highway so there won't be any disturbance to the highway. And that should take place hopefully next summer. And it'll be ready for when we start construction. There's also overhead hydro and cable service with fiber optics across the bridge. They will be relocated and remain overhead as part of the new structure requirements. There is a Bell underground cable on the north side of the structure and that includes some fiber optic cable, but we're not going to disturb that. So they will remain pretty much where they are. So our next steps, actually, we've already initiated geotechnical fieldwork. That's foundation design for the structures. We've finalized our drainage analysis. We've actually selected our bridge superstructure. We're going with precast concrete girders. We're waiting for reports from our specialists, archaeology, natural environment, built heritage, that type of thing. We're having a public information center on the 6th of June. And once we've had that session, we'll complete our preliminary design based on comments we received from the public and hope to finalize this with a tester and a preliminary design report in August of this year. And thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. I will say with the, Arilia going through the development that it is going, we have robust things going on in this side of the highway, but certainly in West Arilia, it's going through a bit of a boom over there in terms of commercial and residential development and of course, increased traffic. So the timing of this is probably very fitting. And I know, I think we're actually looking at the other bridges in the next few years, but to get this up and going will be a great relief for many that travel that way. So thanks for the presentation. I will indeed open the floor for questions or comments, starting with Counselor Sapola and then Counselor Lauer.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's well planned, but I just have one quick question. I go to Collingwood quite often and their roundabouts on the highway there are incredible. And with the environment being what it is today, climate change and everything else, if we can use less stops. So I'm wondering if you would consider on the Burnside, I think there is enough room there to do a roundabout there, traffic coming out of Arilia Square from Burnside and also from the golf course road there. Would you consider looking at that and see if it's possible?
I think that was addressed, but allow this.
But I think there's, the issue is that the intersection of Burnside and Brody is not within our study limits. That intersection is actually controlled by the township of Severn. We did look at roundabout ramp terminals. And what we found was that with the flows and in order to get a reasonable level of service, we had to, we were looking at a two-lane roundabout, which meant that instead of a two-lane bridge, lane in each direction, we would have had to build a wider bridge that would have accommodated two lanes in each direction. And it's just a function of how the roundabout works, what the traffic volumes are from the different legs. And we couldn't, and we did try, we couldn't make it work with a lane in each direction across the structure. So that basically put that alternative to rest because with the signalized intersections, we were able to, you know, get the levels of service that we wanted and maintain a lane in each direction across the structure. So I agree 100% that roundabouts in the right environment and under the right traffic conditions are much more efficient than a signalized intersection, but they didn't work out in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I have a couple of other questions, but I'll wait.
Okay, I'll come back to you in queue. Thank you very much, Counselor Lauer.
Thanks, Mayor Clark. I have a couple of quick ones. The Canadian Tire exit, you're saying that if you're on that trail, every ramp is an intersection so pedestrians can cross with a light, but the Canadian Tire exit, I'm assuming, is not.
The Canadian Tire entrance will not be signalized. That's correct.
Yeah. And I would think just that one will be a tough one, I think. I don't know how you'll lay that out, but that'll have to be.
Yeah. And I think the, the geometry of that intersection or entrance is relatively tight. We haven't done any speed studies per se, but my gut reaction is that, you know, traffic isn't moving at 60 or 70 kilometers an hour. It's much less than that. When we lay that out, the typical approach would be to ensure that the crossing is at 90 degrees to the entrance so that when people come up to the entrance, they'll be at 90 degrees to the flow of traffic and they should be able to, you know, be able to look. And they actually only have to check in one direction because it's just the in-volume. There is no out there. So, you know, there are ways to mitigate it, but it will not be signalized and therefore it will be more of a challenge for cyclists in particular because my sense is that the mall for pedestrians is the destination. From what I understand, cyclists are using West Street and Burnside to access additional cycling routes within the township of Severn. So it's the cyclists that are going to have to be a little more aware of what's going on around them.
Yeah. And I know we have this problem over on Berry Road. And I think the solution they're coming up with is just a bit of signage on the highway warning people that as they go in, they're going to be crossing a trail.
Yeah. And you've probably seen it around, but there's quite often in these conflict areas, they put down, I guess nowadays it's green paint. It used to be blue, but they're putting down the green stripes with the, I call it the sherrows, but it's just the cycling symbol onto the pavement. And that alerts cyclists and the drivers that, you know, there is a conflict area.
And quickly, if I could, I'm really glad to see the trail across the bridge is four meters, which is, I believe the one in Berry Road is three, I believe. Is there the capacity to put bollards to separate?
You've raised an interesting question. And at this point in time, we are considering a number of alternatives to delineate the multi-use trail from the through traffic. And we are considering, well, we're considering things like a concrete barrier. We're considering use of precast curbs with bollards on top of those. We're looking at just straight bollards mounted on the pavement. And we've got examples of, they've been used in all different locations. To be honest, this is a relatively new endeavor for the ministry. They haven't in the past been, careful what I say here, but open to accommodating cycling and pedestrian facilities across some of these bridges.
Yeah, we are looking at different options. The main thing is the safety. And also, we don't want to do over-killing things as I'm not aware of. Our head office. One we did on OBR is like a race curve.
Nan, would you be so kind as to?
Oh, sorry.
He's a microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, the one we did at OBR, Old Berry Road, is a race curve. That's one of the options. And if we have a great multi-use path, it would be easier for bridge repairs than we can use hazard lane and move the traffic, keep two lanes open all the time during repairs. So in that basis, we're looking at great. So if you put the barrier, then we have to remove the barrier. So we are thinking about how we can remove it in case of we have to ship for accident or anything very quickly. So we are investigating. We will have the answer very soon, maybe within a few months, within a weeks.
Few weeks.
Few weeks, yes.
Thanks, thanks, both of you. Counselor Kustra.
Thank you, sir Mayor Clark, to our presenters. Thank you very much for their presentation. Just a question in regards to the entrance to Arilia Square Mall. Right now, there's quite a dip in the road there. Will that road elevation be brought up a little bit more level with the parking lot with Canadian Tire? Because right now, it does dip down quite a bit. And actually, about 12 years ago, I did slide into that curb on a rainy day. Not going very fast. It does get quite slick as well.
Yeah. So to fix the clearance problem on the highway, we've had to raise the bridge. And as a consequence, we're going to raise the profile. So we'll be raising Burnside Line. We aren't going to come up to quite level with the existing parking lot, but we'll get close. I don't remember off the top of my head what the increase is, but we are reducing the grade up into the parking lot. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be less than it is today after we finish the work.
All right. And just another question regarding to the pedestrian and bike path going over the bridge. Are you looking at a type of canopy for that path so that there would be less snow being accumulated on there? You know, if you're going to have it where you're not going to put any bollards up, you know, you'd have less snow on the bridge and maybe you'd have the opportunity. If you did have to close a lane, you could certainly just move over and not have any ice or snow on that section.
We have not looked at a canopy or any covering.
That's a four-meter wide multi-use path, like more than a lane width. So it's easy to plow.
Thank you very much. Counselor Heen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clark. And I'm going back to the snow removal as well. My concern is if you're plowing the bridge, where's the snow going to go? Is it going to end up by blocking part of the pedestrian walkway? If not, or how are you going to remove it to keep that pedestrian area clear?
So the current plan is to have a, basically a shoulder next to the through lanes on the bridge. So the, on the north side, it'll be the edge of the westbound lane. There'll be a shoulder and then the multi-use trail will start. So there will be an area, and again, this is part of our deliberations about what kind of a barrier delineation we want to use. But that shoulder area could be anywhere from two to three meters wide. And in other instances that we've looked at, that's where the snow storage for the roadway goes. Snow removal on the multi-use trail, basically they have to push the snow from one end of the bridge to the other. And a couple of designs we've looked at, it's, they can actually, they've left an opening where they can sort of push it out onto the roadway shoulder to get it off of the path. So winter maintenance is an issue. Arilia has a significant amount of snowfall. So I'm sure that'll be of particular interest to maintenance staff.
And a second question. Your MTO, you don't have sidewalk plows. So how is that pedestrian walkway going to be cleared during the winter time?
I don't know the definitive answer. My initial thoughts are that West Street, Burnside Line are municipal roads. I expect that there has to be some sort of a snowplowing agreement between the municipalities and the ministry. And the multi-use trail would fall into that category. And I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't think, and I may be proven wrong, I don't think the ministry is responsible for clearing that particular route. I may be correct.
And I have one more question, if I may.
Yes, quickly, we are going to need to get it to the meat of our regular agenda.
You mentioned that the properties on Burnside that were going to lose their access. Do they have any other access? Are they going to be landlocked?
All of those properties have, are vacant and I understand, our understanding is that they are part of a development proposal for that area. So the access to those lands, again, our understanding is as part of the development proposal, there's a road that's going to run from Earlwood basically down parallel to the highway and connect to the road network. Please go.
We also send out letters to all the owners informing them we are planning to close that area. So if they have any concern, we will talk to them.
Thank you. Thank you both for that. Counselor Fallis.
Thanks. I'll go quick. Two things I just wanted to mention. One was just a point of, point to mention and just wanted to emphasize it. Heard from a lot of constituents that the idea of walkability over that bridge is important. And I'm sure you know kind of the history of it. It's a little bit difficult to traverse sometimes. So certainly making sure there's a clear path, that it's a safe path, I think is really important and the more accessible that is, the better. The other thing I thought I'd ask because you mentioned it and I just wanted to get a sense for what the advantages and disadvantages were, but a traffic circle you had mentioned that at one point you were considering something like that. And I just wondered what that entailed and what were the pros and cons to it? Thanks.
I think the determining factor was the issue that with the roundabout, we would have to construct a two-lane roundabout. And as a consequence of that, that we would need to construct two lanes in each direction on the new structure. Whereas with the signalized intersection alternatives, we were able to keep the bridge to a single lane in each direction. So that is the principal reason why we didn't select a roundabout solution at this particular location.
Yeah, one of the other issues is that the roundabouts need larger signs. See, the length of the bridge is not enough to have a signs in both roundabouts. You need a larger sign to say which lane to take to turn here and it's too short.
Thank you, Counselor Sapola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this was public information, I had a couple of phone calls. One, if you would consider smart lights over that bridge, similar to what you've done on Highway 12 and Rammer Road, where the traffic coming out of Rammer Road only gets the light if, sorry, the traffic off Rammer Road only gets to go when there's no cars coming the other way. So it automatically triggers it and it's really environmentally positive so that it saves gas and fumes and all that. So I hope you consider that.
And I think as this term, in terms of the signal design, you know, during the peak hours, there's probably more or less equal demand from all directions. At that location, what happens overnight is a different story. And I think as part of the signal design, they'll look at a system where, you know, perhaps West Street, Burnside has the through movement. And if someone comes under the ramp, then there's a call goes into the controller and they'll get a green light in due course. But that's pretty typical of what they go through as part of the signal design.
Thank you. If I may, I know this now that we have you here, not very often.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Why do I get this all the time? Now that we have you here, we don't get to see you very often at this table. So one of the questions that was brought to my attention was sundial bridge, the bridge after this one. I hope you take that into consideration when we do Lackley Street, two, two or three lanes, whatever it is. So I really think you need to also concentrate on that. That is, again, a very, very, very old bridge. And it also needs some kind of a trail going into Severn. The other one is.
Go ahead.
If I may, Highway 12, Taro Park to Highway 11, it's two lanes, and the traffic backup there isn't considered. So just consider it.
I think you've made your point, I just would like.
We don't get them here very often.
I do understand that, but Mr. Seer is a great conduit to our friends at the MTO, and I'd like to bring it back to kind of the substance of the meeting. That's okay. So Counselor Campbell, if you can bear that in mind, if you have a question, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very familiar with this, go over it twice a day, quite often on my bike, although not recently, I have to admit. I'm glad I'm sitting down so you can't see my belly, or you'd know what I'm talking about. So, yeah. So the, the trail going over the bridge, it's four meters wide, you come over the bridge, then I assume there's still a lane on the road, which is a recreation lane? Yes?
No.
No. So you come over the bridge, and then you're on the shoulder of the road?
No, you're on, you're on a multi-use trail.
Still?
Which is the, yes, which will be adjacent but separated from the lanes on the roadway.
Yes, yes, okay, sorry.
Yeah. There will be a cycling, there will be a cycling and pedestrian, well, presuming that the municipalities make the connections, there will be a cycling and.
So it's four meters wide, I come over the bridge, it's four meters wide I have there.
Yeah, four meters on the bridge and three meters off the bridge.
Three meters off the bridge. And then I head down towards the mall, and I get to the intersection, and there's lights there, so I'm safe, I can stop, traffic will go, I get a green light, I continue on. Is there any opportunity to make a recreation lane that goes into the mall? Like, I realize that there will be, you know, the mall would have to be involved in that conversation, but as you're doing this work, instead of that cyclist coming up to what looks like, from the diagram, a kind of off-ramp going into the mall, which is what it looks like now, is there an opportunity to have the recreation trail turn and go into the mall before that road, so that a cyclist or a person walking could safely go into the mall without having to deal with that?
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, and if you're out in, if you go to the field and kind of wander around, you can see where there's a, basically a footpath, and the cycling path has been worn into the parking area. So it seems as though, when they cross, they, being the cyclists and the pedestrians, cross over the existing ramp, they kind of cut across the green area, and they're into the mall. I think, again, you know, once we get out of the interchange area, and I guess that in theory still isn't the interchange area, but, you know, it would require input from the mall as well, I think. And how that got coordinated with the project, I think, is something that remains to be seen, but, you know, if someone raised the initiative, then, you know, we could chat about it.
I think the township of Severn and the Canadians have to work out together to get this proper path, get into the mall.
I wish I knew someone out there. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you all, and thank you both for your time, and thanks for your patience as we got going a little bit late tonight. But Mr. Dowell, Mr. Vicania, thanks, thanks very much. Get home safely.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the opportunity, and a little education in some of the civic issues is not a bad thing, so.
And thank you for putting up with Mr. Seer in our engineering department.
He's tough to deal with, yeah.
He's very tough to deal with, that's right.
You're welcome to the Public Information Center on Thursday.
Oh, good.
Three to four is.
Three to four is. So the Public Information Center is at the Quality Inn. It's going to the, the public session is from four until eight o'clock. From three until four, we have what we refer to as an agency session, and so we invite the agencies, and typically, members of council can come and get a quick preview without, you know, hopefully, a lot of people standing around. And, you know, we can chat with you one-on-one, and, you know, if you have any other questions, we can certainly answer those, but that's coming Thursday, the Quality Inn, three to four is the agency session, four to eight is the public session.
Great, thank you. So the PIC, the Public Information Center.
Public Information Center, that's correct.
The Quality Inn, for members of the public watching at home, between four and eight, Quality Inn this Thursday. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you very much.
This project. Okay, if somebody would be so kind as to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 6, 2019, regular council meeting, May 27, 2019, special meeting of council regarding Building Hope, moved by Counselor Eamon, seconded by Counselor Heen. Is there any discussion on those minutes or emissions that you noticed? I'll call the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Nothing under correspondence this evening under reports. Our clerks department, are we aware, Madam Assistant Clerk, are we aware of anything being pulled for a different direction?
Yes, Mayor Clark, at this time, I'm aware of Counselor Lauer wishing to pull item three, and that's with respect to the Kids for Turtles item for a potential change in direction. I'm also aware of Counselor Sepola wishing to pull item four with respect to the Health Unit's request for cannabis funding, requesting a potential deferral with that item. And I'm also aware of Counselor Fallis wishing just to speak to item two, which is the B-City application item.
Thank you very much. I will, so I'm just going to entertain a motion that captures the rest of the items except for, I guess, items three and four. And Counselor Fallis, while I'm waiting for that, if you wish to speak to item number two, go right ahead.
Yeah, I know there's someone in the audience for the B-City one, so I wondered if we could do that one, if it would be best to do that one first.
Okay, well, we're doing that as part of, you're actually got the floor right now.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm on the clock already. Just kind of a, yeah, exactly, just kind of a quick statement, and a positive statement that Aria is officially becoming a B-City, and, you know, opportunity to encourage the protection of pollinators and their habitat, and it's a really wonderful thing, and we're joining the ranks of some other great cities that have done it already. Credit for Janine and John, who are both in the audience and who waited all this time until this, so credit to them, and really excited to get our buzz on, I guess you might say. Thanks, guys.
I will ask you not to elaborate, Counselor Fallis, unless you invite the rest of us along. Indeed, you know, I just echo your comments. I know to some, hopefully not very many, they might not understand the gravity of this particular issue, but I do believe it is an issue that is gaining more of that gravity on an annual basis, and I'm glad that we can be a part of that program and look to increase in the population and the diversity of our pollinators, so, which in turn, of course, increases the diversity and quality of our food supply and others. So with that being said, I have a motion, is there a motion to, before you on the screen, to adopt the clauses except for three and four? Somebody willing to make that motion, Counselor Eamon, thank you, seconded by Counselor Campbell. Moved by Counselor Eamon, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that report number 2019-6 of Council Committee now, before council be adopted, with the exception of clauses three and four, which shall be introduced separately. Just for the folks at home, or in the audience, there's two, at regular meetings of council, there's two aspects of our agenda that are essentially encompassing motions. This particular section is to do with reports that were brought forward, introduced, and discussed, and debated at last week's council committee meeting. This is a ratification process, so that's why we don't go through them all individually, because we did that last week. But they are certainly available online, and, or here, and you can get a paper copy anytime at City Hall, you see the lovely, the amazing Julia on the main floor. And also, the same thing applies with the consent agenda, which is a little bit later on. So with that being said, I will ask if there's any further discussion on all the items in the report section, aside from items three and four. I'll call the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. And now I will entertain a motion with respect to item three. Counselor Lauer, you got to change your direction, do you have a second or for that? Change your direction?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. This is, well, just let me do a little preamble here, and then I'll illuminate you on what I would like to see happen here. So this is a clause speaking to the request from Kids for Turtles to cover a hydro bill that had fallen behind, and council had referred it to the Grants Committee. Since that time, I have actually reached out to that group, just out of curiosity, to see what kind of circumstances had caused this. And indeed, there were some extenuating, there were some extenuating circumstances. They have a charity, an issue actually, with their charity nonprofit stature, status, and it took a year or so to resolve, and so that resulted in some problems in regards to fundraising. The fact of the matter is, these guys have been going on, going strong for 10 years, and they have hit this little glitch. Since that time, they've, you know, because it's taken a while to get things back up and running the way they were, they have pared their costs down, they have gone to other organizations looking for funding, and are continuing to do that. In the meantime, they still be, they still have been, you know, carrying, carrying on working with the city in the, in some of our camps, and certainly working with bob boles, and working in our parks, I believe, to remove invasive species. So, you know, work has been going on. What I'm trying to accomplish here is to actually save the Grants Committee from the awkward position of having to, basically, send it back to us, to have us waive a condition that an organization cannot have two grants in one year. So to that end, what I'm asking council to do is to defeat the motion in front of you, and I believe staff is prepared to bring the second option that was on that report that will see us take care of us.
You do have a second, or Counselor Fallis? Madam CAO, do you have a desire to weigh in on this at this point?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just that, to Counselor Lauer's point, what we'll need to do is put the motion on the floor first, which is the original motion, we'll defeat that, and then if, if members of council would like, they would defeat that, and then Counselor Lauer would bring forward the second option within the report that was set out last week.
Indeed, thank you. I do have a question, but I will wait until the potentially, the potential of the second motion gets on the floor before I ask it. So there is a motion on the screen here. Is there a mover and a second, or prepared to at least put that on the floor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we do need to get it on the floor in order for it to be defeated in the oral.
This is why I'm actually seeking some support. So I got a mover, and do I have a shaker, right there? So a mover and David, seconder in Counselor Fallis, and he is a second, or a shaker, rather. All right. Jay, this is just to put it on the floor, and doesn't mean you necessarily have to support it if you so desire or not to. Thank you. All right, moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Fallis, that clause three of report number 2019-6 of Council Committee now, before council be adopted. Any discussion? All in favor? That is defeated. As I understand it, okay, there's a motion before us, I won't read it, I'll let you read it yourself, and I'll ask if there is a mover and a second for that. If there is, I will, I will read it when it hits the table.
That's a good idea.
Yes, sir. And seconded by Counselor Fallis. Hey, I'll wait till it hits the desk. Moved by Counselor Lauer, seconded by Counselor Fallis, that further to report number, report PRC, our 1902 dated May 21, 2019, for Parks, Recreation and Culture Department, the hydro costs associated with Kids for Turtles uses of J.B. Tuthope Memorial Park administration building be waived, and that the past due hydro costs and the amount of $1,005 are waived and funded from the general grants budget, and that the requirements of policy 4.2.1.1 guidelines, Grants Committee be waived. Any further discussion? The only thing I would ask from the chair, I know, Counselor Lauer, you brought up at the last meeting, the potential of a solar panel that may or may not produce enough electricity for that particular unit. It seems to me in this day and age, that might be a possibility. Maybe that's something, can we ask through amendment, Madam CAO, that maybe somebody investigate that possibility going forward, for that way, that this may become a non-issue or something?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I would, I would suggest that perhaps you leave that with staff to investigate as a potential option, and if there is, that's a viable option, that we report that through a budget process for 2020.
That sounds great, and I will leave that just as it is then, and look forward to potentially discussing that at budget time. Any further discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. With respect to item four, is there a mover and a second for item number four? Mover? Second, I'd like to at least get it on the floor, seconded by Counselor Lauer. I'll wait for that to hit the desk, but I'll entertain discussion, or I'll discuss entertainment. Moved by Counselor Sepola, seconded by Counselor Lauer, the clause four of report number 2019-6 of Council Committee now, before council be adopted. Any discussion? Counselor Sepola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to amend that to defer, or I'd like to agree, defer this till further notice, and I'll give you some reasons. The Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit, as everybody knows, we're going through some major changes through the province, and changing from 22 to 10. And the way Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit is now, is going to be changed drastically to include major communities. So the reason I say this is because Barry has already contributed some money, and they're asking us for the contribution, but I would, rather than turn them down, defer until they come back to us with more information. The Simcoe-Muskoka Health Unit also contributed to our Canadian Index of Well-being, and should provide in funding, and they also provided their expert staffing and so on, and they spend a lot of time with us. So I think Counselor Eamon might be able to enlighten us a little bit more. So I think, out of respect and out of possible benefits to our community, I think if we defer this until we have further information from the province on how they're going to do it, and maybe they can come back to us. And I wouldn't put a date on it, I'd just say, you know, just defer it until Simcoe-Muskoka comes back to us with more information at a future date.
Madam Assistant Clerk, would you be able to weigh in on this?
Certainly, Mayor Clark. Typically, when we move to postpone a motion, we should attach a timeframe to it so that staff know when to put it on an agenda.
Can we put maybe a time, a time on it or a date with the qualification that it could be sooner than the date if they come sooner? Madam CAO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just in terms of clarification, this particular issue deals with cannabis funding and cannabis programs that the health unit is looking to move forward with. I believe what Counselor Sepola is speaking to is the sort of future of the health unit and more the provincial impact of where the health unit may wind up. So if I can just get some clarification with respect to that issue, this particular issue deals with what they're proposing in terms of a cannabis-type education program. And if I can just add, Mr. Mayor, that I did have a conversation recently with the CAO from the county, just trying to better understand sort of their approach. CAO from the county, just trying to better understand sort of their approach and what they were doing in terms of providing funding to the health unit. And the response that I got back from, from the CAO, what he indicated was that their initiative with the health unit was from a sort of regional perspective, regional in scope and is attempting to address the social and health impacts. And he believed that the city would be covered by the county's initiative with the health unit and consequently thought that Arilia would be free to sort of utilize the funding that Arilia is receiving for Arilia's initiative. So he was just providing further clarification in terms of the county's initiatives and the county's contribution to the health unit and, and thought that Arilia could certainly benefit from the county's participation as well.
Thank you, Counselor Fallis. You want to comment on the first question?
Sure. It is with the cannabis and I'm sorry if I gave you a different perspective to it. But I think what's, what might happen is, is once the province makes a decision, then I think, and we haven't had a board meeting to, we have one in about a week, to elaborate even more on this. That's why I would like to defer and see what comes out of the thing, out of the provincial restructuring so that, and Barry is under the same jurisdiction that we are through, through the county and they've donated and they've given some money to them as well, up and above what the county does. So I'm not saying, it could be that in September, I'd like to go to September, and it could be that then we say, no, sorry, we can't do it because of what our CAO has just said or yes, because of the, because of the new initiative that the province has implemented, then we can't do it. So I think it's out of courtesy and out of respect for them. And also, I'm not saying to fund it at this time, but just to see what happens in the future.
Okay, I'm hearing, yeah, I'm not sure if I'm hearing one thing or two things. Certainly you're, you're curious how the reorganization is going to affect the unit and I guess by extension, the unit's ability or capacity to be involved in some sort of health-related initiatives regarding cannabis. The, as I understand the request, it is a request for now for cannabis-based initiatives, but I'm also hearing that the county may be covering off some of the things for the city that they were going to cover off. So that's just a, I'm just trying to galvanize the, the, the issue from the chair's perspective. I'm going to go to Counselor Eamon in a moment, but so if there is going to be a change of direction, if we're not, if we're going to do what we did last week and just basically receive this information, this motion will go forward. If it doesn't go forward, Counselor Fallis, that'll be your opportunity to bring an alternative motion for, unless you're making a motion to postpone, if you are, I'll see if there's a second or a one with how to.
That was my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, I've got on this, I think I have Jay, Tim, and then Ted, but if it's specific to that item right there, then I'll, everybody on that specific same thing. Okay, go ahead, Jay.
Uh, might be, sorry, I might be a little off base here, but one thing I wondered, is there any way in including this, we could also include strategies related to dealing with the opioid crisis as well?
That's, that certainly wasn't part, a material part of the, of the request from the Health Department. I would suggest that might be something that would have to be contemplated differently, I would think, and that's, and I'm getting nods from those. Counselor Lauer?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Sorry, just going back to procedure, the report we received last week spoke to the recommendation that we put this off until we knew more. So when we receive it as information, does that, is that it or does that, is that, was that simply just saying until we had further information, we will, we could consider it in the future?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the motion, the way the report was set up, recommendation number one was the staff recommendation, which was to receive the report as information. And then further to that, the receiving of the report as information essentially meant that we were going to deny the request from the health unit. And the primary reason behind that was we weren't able to definitively identify the potential costs associated with cannabis. We are moving forward in terms of funding the issue to a certain degree by hiring an officer, by doing additional enforcement. The fire department, the police department weren't able to particularly or specifically identify additional costs at this time. So the idea was, is if we were going to provide funding to the health unit, then it would potentially cause us grief if in fact our policing costs had increased or our fire costs increased, et cetera. So that was one of the justifications for simply receiving the report as information, which ultimately denies the request from the health unit.
Thank you, Counselor Eamon.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Dr. Gardner, I got that right, right? Did reach out to me personally this week, on Friday, actually, to speak about this matter. I think he may have been wanting to speak to me about my, my personal comments with respect to why I did not support this. I have not had a chance to speak with him. We've not been able to connect. So a postponement in the near term, from my point of view, would allow me to do that, which would give me more information. So I'm not in favor of postponing until 2022 on the 15th of April of that year. That I think would be too long. However, I would be willing to defer for a month while we do this. I will be not only speaking to Dr. Gardner about this particular matter and how we have already allocated our funds to do the things that we felt were the highest priority, I will be also seeking clarity over my comment with respect to the health unit's participation in, in our, our evolving healthcare issues in the, in the area. I may in fact take advantage of speaking with him about the very positive response we had to the C I W with the healthcare's participation. I do believe they got extreme value for money, for the amount of money they paid, notwithstanding that it doesn't cover their full jurisdiction, they got a very great value on that. But I will also be asking Dr. Gardner, why it is that they haven't been able to find within their own funding mechanism opportunities to cut back on potentially programs that they've had in place for many years that have proven to be successful and are now to some degree in a hold pattern as opposed to an active pattern and fund these kinds of initiatives internally? We have to do that within our jurisdiction often because we have to make choices like most agencies do. So anyway, I will be having those conversations if, and would be happy to report back to counsel on, on what happens. In the meantime, if Counselor Sepola wants to put a postponement for a finite period of time, I'd be happy to second that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to do 30 days or a month till our next meeting.
That would take us to July 18th?
Yeah.
So I think we've had a good discussion. I see nobody else in queue. Counselor Sepola suggesting a postponement until July 18th. This year, I believe, Counselor Eamon. And Counselor Eamon will second that. So I will entertain, well, first of all, let's, no, let's postpone, a motion to postpone. It's a verbal motion. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? All in favor? Kerry, thank you. That, I believe, Madam Assistant Clerk and Deputy Clerk, that concludes our report, which is really essentially the first part of our agenda this evening. So we have a motion, under motions, oddly enough, that's where we find it, with respect to Arilia Power Corporation and the motion, potential, mostly, sorry, the motion for consideration is on the screen. Is somebody willing to move that? Moved by Counselor Hean, seconded by Counselor Eamon. Moved by Counselor Hean, seconded by Counselor Eamon. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Arilia Power Corporation passed the following motion at its April 24th, 2019 board meeting, resolved that the Board of Directors of the Arilia Power Corporation recommends a dividend subject to shareholder approval in the amount of $800,000 payable to the City of Arilia by June 30th, 2019. Therefore be it resolved that the shareholder ratifies the Board of Directors' dividend motion of April 24th, 2019, and approves payment of a dividend to the shareholder in the amount of $800,000 by June 30th, 2019. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, under notice of motion, I believe we had one item that is not coming forward. And I believe we have another item that is, is coming forward. And the motion, my goodness, you guys are fast, you non-guys are fast. Okay, is there a mover and a second or for the motion on the screen before you? Moved by Counselor Clusster, seconded by Counselor Sepola. I'll wait for it to hit the table. So, yeah, so to put this on the floor, I have a non-debatable motion to get it on the floor and then if the motion succeeds in getting on the floor, then we can have a discussion. This is moved by Counselor Clusster, seconded by Counselor Sepola, to be carried by two-thirds of members of counsel. That in accordance, pretend it's baseball. That in accordance, I had to clear, okay. That in accordance with section 22.8.3 of chapter 22 of the City of Arilia Municipal Code, moved by Rob, seconded by Ralph, notice of motion, new matter, counsel hereby waive notice to enable a motion to be introduced under the notice of motion section of the agenda with respect to granting authority for special events related to the National Basketball Association, or especially known as the NBA Finals. There is no discussion, so I will see by a show of hands, a motion to put this on the floor. That is carried. Thank you. And now we'll welcome to the platform, no stranger to danger, Ray Merkley, Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, and Jacqueline Sashka, Manager of Culture for the city within that same department. And.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I've asked staff to take the time to go through the report in detail because our viewing public at home does not have the benefit of the report before them and members of council haven't had the opportunity to review the report.
Indeed, I don't think anybody on council has had a chance. Thank you very much. The, and over, and for those at home in the audience or in our friends in the media, this, yeah, so we'll take a few minutes and go through this. The, the, and it was, I mean, it's put together in short order. I mean, this is the nature of this kind of request. And, and I will thank staff for doing this over the last, the last couple of days because I'm sure it involves some, some weekend energy and resources as well. So with that being said, who's taking the lead on this?
I will.
This is Champlin Working Group.
This is where culture meets sport or sport meets culture.
And then Sashka.
On May 30th, 2019, the Toronto Raptors made history. For the first time since joining the league in 1995, they made it to the NBA Finals facing the Golden State Warriors. Their success has generated much excitement in the sporting community around the country. During each game, the Raptors host a screening of the game outside of Scotiabank Centre in Jurassic Park. Many municipalities, including Vaughan, Burlington, Mississauga, Wieland, or Welland? Welland, thank you. Barry, I'm an East Coaster. Pickering and Midland are offering similar, family-friendly oriented, public viewings of the games in their communities. The City of Arilia received a number of requests through social media after game one to screen the games here in Arilia. As a preliminary step, staff reached out to Maple Leaf Sports and Entertainment Limited to see and to ask the requirements for hosting such an event locally. Staff received email confirmation granting the permission to host a viewing party under the following conditions. The event needs to be free to attend. There can be no sponsorship. We need to use the TV broadcast, including the commercials and volume. And there is no use of the intellectual property of the NBA, Rogers or Bell. The best of seven finals series is currently tied at one game apiece. Games three and four of the series are being held in Oakland on Wednesday, June 5th and Friday, June 7th. The series returns to Toronto for game five on Monday, June 10th. Game six, if necessary, would be in Oakland on the 13th and game seven would be in Toronto on June 16th, if necessary. The games are streamed either at 8:00 PM or 9:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. As communities across the province are becoming more responsive to these types of events that build civic pride through community engagement, it is being recommended that staff be authorized to organize public viewings of the remaining games of the NBA Finals. In addition, staff are recommending a budget of $20,000 be established and that staff be delegated authority to close a municipal parking lot for the events if required. As the organizing time for this event has been limited, staff are still exploring options for location, determine the internet or cable TV logistics, and sourcing out suitable audiovisual equipment. As such plans have not been finalized, several locations have been considered, but the city center parking lot may be the most feasible given the cable connection. As these public viewings are becoming more popular, resources are scarce. Outside of the financial commitment, logistics or the availability of equipment may preclude the city from hosting the event. Staff will make every effort to coordinate and will alert the public via social media by noon on the event day if the event will proceed as planned, subject to council approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sashka. I think you did a very good job well positioning something that has just fallen in your lap. I will entertain, I think I've already read the motion. Have I, no, apparently I have not, so is, I did have a mover, no, I have a mover and a second or I was for to get it, to get it on the floor. So I will ask if there's a mover and a second or for this particular motion. Moved by Counselor Hean, seconded by Counselor Campbell. And I will wait for it to hit my desk before I entertain discussion. Moved by Counselor Hean, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that staff be authorized to organize up to five public viewings of the National Basketball Association and NBA Finals. And at a budget of $20,000, I assume that means this year. That a budget of $20,000 be allocated for the viewings and that funding for the budget be allocated from the operating contingency and that the Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture be delegated authority to close a municipal parking lot for the events if required. Just one quick question on the balance of the contingency, if we can have that as information.
Through you, Mayor Clark. I checked with the treasurer today. This is the first request out of the contingency this year, so the balance is $100,000.
Thank you very much. Helpful information. Discussion. Counselor Spola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I have an explanation on whether that $20,000 will be spent, please?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So the equipment rental we've sourced out is approximately $300 per, $3,000, sorry, per event. And we do have to guarantee that once we start booking the events, if we want to do all seven, we have to book all seven at one time and pay for the cost, or sorry, all five. We have to book the screens and the equipment and the projector for all five of the events. And the remaining would be staff, staff support and security officers potentially as we move forward and the excitement bills during the event.
Thank you. Follow up, Counselor Spola?
Yeah, follow up. I, I think there's people in town that will provide a 65, 75 inch television set that we can do this either in the library. But if I may, Mr. Mayor, I will not support the $20,000. I think that money can be used somewhere else. I think there's ways of doing it that wouldn't cost us. I can understand. I think there's ways of doing it that wouldn't cost us, I can understand a couple of thousand dollars, but not 20,000, Mr. Mayor.
The only thing I would add is in the report, they did clearly say, Maple Leaf Sports and Entertainment, that there couldn't be any sponsorship.
Sorry, say that again.
The Maple Leaf Sports and Entertainment said, gave permission to air the events, but that there could not be any sponsorship.
I can appreciate that, but there's people that would, without sponsorship, naming their names and that, that would probably donate one of those television, we could do it at the library.
If somebody stepped forward, I think we'd probably welcome that. Mr. Merkley.
Yes, Mayor Clark, just to clarify, the type of screen we're looking at is an outdoor inflatable screen, it's probably about 30 feet big. We are having a challenge trying to source one, though, because all communities, there are a lot of communities around who are doing it, so there's a big demand on them right now, so we're still trying to source out the best fit, but we did find one that was that, and that's why it is the price that it is for the duration of the events.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Spolstra. Counselor Fallis.
Yeah. I am a sports fan, but I do see Ralph's point a little bit there, like, it does seem like a bit of a price tag. Were there any other possible venues? Like, one of the thoughts I had was at the amphitheatre at Kooch, and as opposed to renting the screen, you could just project it onto the, onto the back, yeah.
Through you, Mayor Clark, certainly we did look at all alternatives. The Aqua Theatre is still, has construction fencing around it from the work we were doing, we're getting it ready for June, but it's not, or the Sunday evening band concerts, but it's not there yet. And the other issue with that location is getting internet connection, a reliable internet connection to there that's not there right now, so that was a challenge with that site.
Like, just a, I guess I can understand Toronto's rarely in the finals, so, yeah, probably never, as Counselor Heen, yeah, pointed out, or at least in the recent past. Like, hypothetically, if the Raptors made it back next year, would we be doing the same thing? Would we have the same proposal?
Sure, you should be taught never to answer a hypothetical question.
Through you, Mayor Clark, certainly we'd have to look at the alternatives at that time, but for example, one of them could be that you could host that in the Aurelia Recreation Centre at that time, because we do have digital boards within that facility, so that would be a different way to go about it in the future.
Counsel Ream.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. It has been quite amazing to observe the spontaneity of the gatherings, not only in Jurassic Park outside of the Scotiabank Arena, but across the province, and as well Halifax and Saskatoon for the game the other night. So, I do believe this is something that a generation of sports fans, which probably doesn't include me in terms of age or ability, but does recognize that this is something that is important, and I think we should be very much involved in this. I'm just wondering if your correspondence with Maple Leaf Sports and Entertainment commented on the third quarter of the game last night.
Thank you, Counselor Iman. Any further questions come by Counselor Clusser than Counselor Lowry?
Thank you through you, Mayor Clark, to Mr. Merkley and Ms. Sashka. Is there any opportunity to get a digital score, or digital screen for the Rec Centre right now as a rental? Sorry, for the Rec Centre currently at Rotary Place, as we would have significant parking opportunities out there for it.
Through you, Mayor Clark, certainly that is, we could look at that as an alternative to see about digital screens, I don't know how large we can get them that quickly out there. I do think there's probably a little bit of the ambience of the outdoor nature of the Jurassic Park that people are looking for, as opposed to going into an arena setting. I think the Aurelia Recreation Centre down the road maybe has a little different feel to that, being a gym and/or the aquatic side.
My son suggested we should call it, this will resonate with certain viewership, but call it Jurassic Park Beyond the Wall. It's a, there you go. But you have to be a Game of Thrones. Counselor Lowry.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I'd just remind everybody that part of the ambience of Jurassic Park is the fact that it's licensed, so that would probably attract quite a few people, that may not attract here, but my question is, I agree with Ralph, 20,000 bucks is a lot of money. In a perfect world, it'd go five more games, and we would win the last game. In a not-so-perfect world, we get hammered the next game, and then we get hammered again, and nobody is interested in that third, third game, and did I hear you right saying that we couldn't cancel the contract? We've got to pretty well pay for five, five games, and if there's only three?
Through you, Mayor Clark. Certainly the one source we have so far, they wanted a commitment for all five dates if we were doing that, but we're still trying to source out other options to see if there's anything others available that won't have that same kind of commitment.
Counselor Fallis.
And I apologize, I'm not familiar with the final schedule, but like, would there be a way of saying, you know, the Fri, like, the weekend nights, we commit to it, something like that, so like, meet in the middle where we cover two games kind of thing? No, that's if they make it to game six and seven.
Mr. Merkley.
Through you, Mayor Clark, certainly we could do whichever games that we chose to do, but that goes back to the one point of if we can't source out another place for the AV equipment, and we have to purchase, or we have to rent it for all the dates, you're better off to probably do it, because you have to spend that money if you're going to do two dates, or three dates, or four dates.
Counselor Heen, you want to bring us on with this?
I know that some of the movie theatres are showing the game, has that been asked about here?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. The closest one that's being shown is in Barry. Aurelia currently is not on the list of the 33 theatres that are showing.
Is that a possibility?
That's something we can explore, for sure.
And Barry is doing Jurassic Park as well, I believe.
Yes, and they are doing the outdoor venue at Meridian Park.
Okay, so I was wondering if the movie theatre might be a possible alternative.
They would hold a couple hundred people. Anyway, okay, any further discussion? Sure, Counselor Lowry.
Sorry, Mayor Clark, have we got any report on how successful these other locations are doing? Or is there any town comparable to ours? And how are they doing?
Through you, Mayor Clark. The only number that I've heard was, we looked on social media, and we found that Midland said they had over 100 people, that was someone tweeted. The only other is from my observation, just seeing him on TV, how many people are there?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We also have numbers for London had 500, Windsor had 2,700, and Mississauga had 20,000. I don't expect we'll have the latter, however. Those are some other numbers that we have.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands in the air, except for Counselor Fallis's, go ahead.
When in doubt, yeah, exactly, I'll raise my hand. Might sound a little on the cheap side, but like, would there be any way of doing like, like, a small amount for ticket sales or something like that, or you can't do that?
Yeah, it's one of the conditions from MLSE. Okay. No further discussion, I will now call the questions all in favor. Sorry, I read the motion, did I not? Yeah, so the motion in front of you to bring the NBA Finals to Aurelia with this motion, if somebody didn't understand that, I will call the question again. All in favor? That is defeated. Listen, staff, I just want to, Ms. Sashka and Mr. Merkley, thank you very much for the effort that has gone into that in a very, very hurried fashion, and so just want you to know that your efforts were very much appreciated. Thank you. No deputation motion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, at this point, I think the affordable, or, sorry, the homelessness group was just more or less looking to come back to council periodically, and potentially they could also go to the Affordable Housing Committee as another option, and it is my understanding with respect to the interchange issue, staff will be reporting on that as well, so I do not believe any motions are required unless any member of council would like to bring a motion forward.
That's my recollection from the chair, so. Counselor Lowry.
Thanks, Mayor Clark. I don't want to bring a motion forward, I don't think, but I think there was a consensus that we were around the table, that we're in favor of a safe passage in regards to pedestrians. And I'm just wondering, do we need to have a motion to convey that to them?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Seer was here to listen to the discussion, and as indicated, staff will be bringing proactively a report forward on that overall project, so certainly that will be part of, part of that project, or, sorry, part of that report.
Okay, and his name was Nian, I think. I mean, he did mention there are some barriers, like a curb, which I don't think is the solution, so when I'm talking barriers, I'm talking a minimum of bollards or something there.
I would encourage any member of council who wishes to, to show up on Thursday night between 3:00 and 4:00 at Rotary, no, where was it? Queen, Qualley Inn.
But, sorry again, Mayor Clark, but certainly I think it's more effective if it's a group opinion going forward, through staff or however it goes, but as opposed to the image.
I'm hearing motion material, Madam CEO, unless you can tell me it's the staff direction.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If there's more comfort in actually enshrining that in motion, we can certainly do that. And the other alternative is if staff come forward with a report, as part of that report, that motion coming out of that report, you can certainly include that as council's position. So, it's really up to you as to whether you would like to enshrine that in motion in direction, moving forward for the staff report.
Ted's shaking his head.
Yeah, so, I want to move this along, so, Madam CEO.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just, Ms. Caddo was just mentioning the fact that Active Transportation is also going to be looking at that project as part of their agenda in the next two weeks as well.
But it's, just to be clear, from Counselor Lowry's perspective, it's not just that it'll have a four-meter trail, which it sounds like it's in the two-to-four design, it's the safety between the two modes of transportation, so will Active Transportation consider that, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We certainly can introduce that notion to them, they're very proactive with safety for all modes of transportation.
Counselor Clusser.
Just through you, Mayor Clark, quickly to Ms. Caddo, is the Active Transportation Committee looking at what Counselor Campbell had suggested regarding the trail from? At that point, okay.
Okay. So, moving on, we have consent. Okay, Ted. The, I just want to say, Mr. Phillips, it'll be the desire and effort of this chamber not to keep you here until 1:42 in the morning, so we'll move on into consent agenda. And, staff, are we aware of any items being pulled forward, direction change?
Not at this time, Mayor Clark.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to enshrine all the items in the consent agenda. Moved by Counselor Heen, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that council adopt the recommendations as set out on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of council on June 3rd, 2019. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carry it, thank you. Sorry, I had a question on one of the bylaws, but there I don't, or didn't, or has escaped me. So, is there somebody willing to move a motion to capture the bylaws this evening? Moved by Counselor Clusser, seconded by Counselor Heen. Moved by Counselor Clusser, seconded by Counselor Heen, that the following bylaws be enacted, a bylaw to establish a .3-meter reserve as a public highway, Phase 4, 5, and 6 of Stone Ridge Subdivision, 2019-68. A bylaw to amend Chapter 170 of the City of Aurelia Municipal Code, Municipal Bylaw Enforcement Officer. 2019-69, a bylaw to adopt the municipal budgets for the year 2019, and to provide the raising, levying, and collecting of monies, of the monies required during the said year for the purposes of the City of Aurelia. 2019-70, a bylaw to accept and assume for the, for use as a public highway certain lands within the City of Aurelia designated as Part 1, Plan 51R 41929, Green Haven Shelter for Women, 570 Sundial Drive. 2019-71, Amendment Number 112, the Traffic and Parking Resolution, bylaw number 200755 as amended, 125 Fitz Road West, 255 Oxford Street, 2019, Mississauga Street West, and 1 University Avenue. 2019-72, a bylaw to accept and dedicate a road widening, Part 1 on Plan 51R 41983, to this corporation of the City of Aurelia, Dunlop Street. Oh, that was my question. 2019-73, a bylaw to authorize the application to designate the City of Aurelia as a B-city. 2019-74, a bylaw to amend Chapter 660 of the City of Aurelia Municipal Code, Removal of Snow and Ice Business Improvement Area. Any discussion? I have a quick question, I believe, or a quick question, well, hopefully a quick answer. With respect to bylaw 72, we're only contemplating this property on one address on Dunlop Street. Is there an explanation why it's just the one address? Sorry, I did mean to ask staff this question earlier today, and it's more out of curiosity, and if there isn't an answer this evening, I'll be quite happy to wait, delay that answer till tomorrow.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I have the bylaw in front of me, and it references just the legal description, it doesn't specifically identify the number on Dunlop Street, so I can certainly endeavor to find that out for you, but I don't have that in front of me at this point in time, just the actual legal description for the road widening.
Either, no matter what the answer is, I'm quite willing, I'm quite willing to move this ahead, so I'm fine with that. Thank you. Any further discussion? I will call the question all in favor. Carry it, thank you. Okay, I also... Okay, I also, also, I just kicked myself right out of the program, so. Yeah, so a bylaw to confirm the proceedings for tonight's council meeting? Moved by Counsel Lauer, seconded by Counsel Reamond? Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll call the question all in favour? Counselor Fallas?
Thanks. I just wanted to make a quick announcement. It's actually a kind of more of a political statement than anything. What, we've recently?
This is, this is for announcements, not for political statements.
Yeah, it's a political announcement, I guess, if I'm permitted, just kind of a statement in general. I think, I just wanted to bring people's attention to the recent statements made by AMO on Bill 108, provincially.
Yeah, I don't, that's more of an agenda item.
Okay, okay. Well, just letting everyone know at home, I guess, that it's something that's worth looking at, and I think, you know, going forward.
Counselor Fallas?
I'll, I'll, I'll let it slide.
This is traditionally a
I do apologize, thanks.
An announcement of community events in the spirit, that's in the spirit in which it's met, that's why it's outside the typical agenda item list. Having said that, I'm going to take that and go look at it. Thank you. I know what you're talking about, but yes, that would be, definitely be an agenda item. Open public forum. If there's anybody who wishes to address council, now is your opportunity. Seeing nobody, we'll move on. I'm just kidding, Tom. I'm just kidding, Tom. Come on, come on down. So this is open public forum, that procedure, Mr. Phillips? Speak only to issues within the municipal jurisdiction. Public forum period shall be maximum of 30 minutes. Answer questions from the speaker, or speakers, and if a question is directed at council which requires staff input, the mayor may request the speaker to put their concerns in writing. Mr. Phillips, the floor is now yours. So just your, just your name and whether you're a resident or not.
...of political analyst, you also have replied that this is also in order. Recently, I had communication with legal counsel in the Office of Provincial Minister of Transportation in respect to denial of transit services and of the statements made by city clerk referring to no reconsideration, no modifying of transit route, and et cetera, to which I was informed that this was a means of declaring constitutional rights of residents being denied and discrimination, and in the process ignoring the civil rights decision of the Human Rights Tribunal. This statement made by city clerk was similar to statements made previously in that content problems with passengers cannot transfer to other routes, which was declared with intent to be non-providing transportation services. Reference was also made to, a statement made by the committee chairman of Transit Advisory Committee in that no mandate to deal with information from Onbuzman or the deputy critic of transportation's legal department, to which I was informed that this was a means of declaring a case of perjury. I was advised by MPP Jill Dunlop that consultation had taken place with the provincial minister of transportation on this situation of non-providing of transportation to those residents in my area, and which replied, I require all information on this situation to be addressed to his attention. I had occasion to approach legal counsel in the human rights on the subject of this matter of declaration by city clerk, to which I was informed that in light of all information presented previously, this was all presented to the Human Rights Tribunal, declared a decision, and also that transportation can operate on those roads periodically. Last Thursday, I received a phone call from legal counsel from the Human Rights Tribunal informing me that the statement made by city clerk was declared to be out of order and constituted constitutional rights of residents being denied to transportation and discrimination, and also that city were failing to accept the legal decision of Human Rights Tribunal in that constitutional rights of those residents were being completely denied to transportation services and being discriminated against. Therefore, the decision was restore this transit service forthwith. He also referred to a statement made that by city appointing, what do we call it, a consultant to deal with matters of transportation. This was a means to declare no transportation provided to those residents under constitutional rights. Therefore, the human rights decision came into effect. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phillips. I don't know how you did it, but you came about five seconds under five minutes. Anyway, Mr. Phillips, thank you very much for your, your passion on this. I know it's been a passion of yours for many, many years, and you're to be commended for that. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn, moved by Counsel Spohler, twice apparently, seconded by Counsel Lauer, all in favour? Thank you, have a wonderful night.